Are there any questions or suggestions before we proceed?
Um, page six. The um. Big paragraph there. When there's discussion on the educational seminars. I would just like it noted that I asked for clarification regarding how the sunshine law training would apply to me. So somewhere that can be included, whether it's just before that discussion follows the statement.
Okay, my understanding is you want that in the minutes?
Uh huh.
Aren't the minutes the highlight of the thing? Is that, would that be, I mean, I understand you want it for your future reference in case something happens, but does that, do you think that's necessary?
You know, we have pretty substantial minutes, so if that's something that she would like in there, I'm okay with us putting it in there. Some, some organizations have very small minutes, so just give a high level of detail of the discussion that's happened. I think that the end result of that was that the trustee Augustine would confer with the other trustees, correct? Okay, so what I'm saying is Ms. Engelmann saw clarification regarding how the sunshine training applied to her and discussion with the trustees will ensue.
Sounds fair. Thank you.
Will follow, period. Is, are there any other comments or concerns? There's nothing else. I've entertained a motion to approve the organizational minutes from January 5th, 2023 as modified.
So moved as amended.
Seconded by Manley, seconded by Engelmann. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And approved, minutes have been approved. Michelle, your line and my line here on the first page, put her name on this on the second page, so you sign it. And Mr. Chedo, I assume since you weren't at the meeting, that you'll be abstaining from the vote?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. You can just pass it down, you have to sign, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
We don't normally throw you in the first meeting, so I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Had the opportunity to observe. I think that we've only been doing two votes tonight, so I guess we'll do a vote to adjourn.
Are we?
We made the motion, we need to put it back together. Just waiting for the signatures to be complete on that one. Our next order of business is the review of the minutes from the zoning commission regular meeting from January 5th, 2023. Has everyone had the opportunity to review those? And are there any requested changes or questions? There are no requested edits. I will entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from January 5th, 2023 as written.
So moved.
Moved by Crew.
Second.
Seconded by Engelmann, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And Mr. Chedo, I assume you'll abstain from that vote as well?
I will.
Thank you. I get it. There is no old business for tonight, so I'll go ahead and move on to new business. I've brought up three topics for us to discuss tonight. There, when I asked at the last meeting if there was any strong position or topic that people felt strongly we should discuss, there really wasn't a lot of discussion, a lot of sentiment towards any one topic. So I thought that we would discuss some topics that have been brought up in the past. Again, this is just an opening discussion. We might, at the end of these discussions, decide that we don't want to move forward with any text amendments. We might decide that we want to introduce a new chapter. It's just an opening discussion for us on these topics to see what's happening in the community, what the state of the, of these issues are in other communities and decide if there's any interest in moving forward to formally writing some amendments for our resolution. So the first topic that I, that I listed here is just a discussion regarding outdoor light control. And I will also say, just in the interest of what happened in the organizational minutes, what we'll do is after each one of these topics, if there's any public comments that want to be made specific to that topic, we'll open it up for discussion at that point. As always, if someone wants to intervene in the middle of a discussion, please just raise your hand and we'll try to, to involve you in that discussion, but we don't want to have this be an open forum with the community generally. So, in, in the interest of outdoor light control, you know, that topic has been brought up before, particularly on residents that are adjacent to business districts and adjacent to Brunswick and some of the light pollution that they see. And so, one of the topics that we could look at i- is the regulation of, of lights through, you know, the, the lumens that a light's able to produce, the number of lights that a business is able to use per school, per square area, per square foot, or something along those lines, or the direction of those lights. And so I was curious to see if this is a topic that this commission has any thoughts on.
Do we have, I know last year we talked about something at the town hall where we would get a copy or notify what concerns are being brought forward?
From the BCA?
From, not just from the BCA, but from the residents. Remember, there was no such file and they were starting one?
And I don't think we've received any.
Correct. Okay.
This has been a topic that's been brought up and I think we've had emails last year about this. And in fact, someone referred us to Sedona. And I did pull up Sedona's code and what they look at is they say that their outdoor lighting chapter, which is very small, it's a front and a back page, applies to buildings and structures, recreational areas, parking lot lighting, landscape lighting, and other outdoor lighting. So it's pretty expansive in what it regulates. We would not have to go that far. We could regulate just the lighting in business districts. We could regulate the lighting in business districts and in front signage of communities. You know, we could look at it from a multitude of limitations.
Just to fill me in a little, when it was brought up, was it particularly mentioned that Sedona was the type of aesthetic that we were looking for?
The person who provided this to us had just been out to Sedona, and I think that they live over near the Brunswick border, and they were concerned about the amount of light that's coming from that area into their community. And so they said they had just been out to Sedona and they really appreciated some of the lighting controls that they had, which they felt limited. The, the light pollution. And so what Sedona does is they just regulate the height of the fixtures not to exceed 20 feet. They limit, they limit the wattage of lights that can be used after 11:00 PM to 150 watts. And then they say that they can't direct light upon any adjacent property. And they have to be hooded or shielded. So it's pretty generic. I will say, one of the things that we've got to be careful of is we've looked at noise control before, and in fact, there was regulation in our code about noise to, to regulate noise, and it wasn't effective. There was really no measure of policing that. And so it ultimately was removed from our code. And so what I don't want is a situation like that where we attempt to draft some regulation only to decide that it's non-enforceable. We don't have the manpower for it, and then we just revert back. The, the one opportunity where I see where we would have an ability to have a big difference here is when we do a preliminary site plan or a final site plan review of a space and we can look at the comprehensive layout of a new development, a new business and say, look, we don't, we don't like where your lights are, are situated, or we think your light should be lower, or we think your light should have more direction. At that point, we'll be able to have our input, but after the fact, I think it's very difficult from a manpower standpoint and township to really regulate what people are doing lighting.
Yeah. When that was brought to, brought up, well, they live residentially near Brunswick? And it's the commercial lighting in Brunswick?
I believe so.
Okay. I do think, you know, if we had a little more input on, you know, Sedona as an example, it's in the middle of, it's like, no, it's a oasis in the desert.
Correct.
They do have a lot, they obviously do not have a lot of light pollution. You can see the stars in the sky there. But I think probably a lot of our light regulation that we already have in place here is probably beyond what Sedona has in the evening as it stands. I think we would just have to review, you know, what it is that they'd like for us to take a look at. I would be willing to say that we probably have exceeded that in the town square as far as each individual location.
Having too much light?
Having more light than usually, because I think they've been pretty regulated on that in general, or they've just built it that way and have the aesthetic that way. And I also don't know the population of Sedona. I would imagine it is even larger.
Largest city, obviously.
It's large. However, it's got a lot of empty space in between as well.
Is this a topic that we even want to look further at? I, I'm, I'm just not sure. Again, I was having a very difficult time at the last meeting gauging what we would like to look at. And, and I'm not sure that, you know, I know that this is something that residents have brought up, but is it something that we want to investigate further? Do we want to start looking at other local areas to identify what they're doing? Do we want to look at limitations just for business districts or, or nothing at all?
If, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I, on the BCA at one time, we did delve into this as part of a condition, request that dealt with raw in the youth fields, and we were able to request the lumens that we wanted, the wattage, if you will, and also the lights were directed in a certain direction. And they turned off at a certain time, most notably the fields up there off Laurel Road in that area. I said they're off 130th Coback Fields. There was a number of complaints from people who moved in after the lights were out, but then Rock came back for something else and it was tagged on to there about that. And that would, that's otherwise, we never, we couldn't really do anything.
And I think.
We negotiated because they wanted something and we, we wanted something, I guess, is the best way to put it.
I think if we wanted to do light control at all, I think that those are the two most obvious objective standards are lumens and direction, because you can pull up a bulb and you can see it's a 45-degree angle bulb, or it's a 20-degree angle bulb, and you can see the lumens on it. So it's a relatively easy enforcement because it, you know, anyone can pull a bulb and see what, what the characteristics of that bulb are.
Well, I don't know if we could have a general statement that, as it deals with business, rather, that zoning commission would have the right. I don't know, they say the right, would have the opportunity to control the wattage and direction, the end of story. I don't know if such a line would be, or section would be possible or not, but it's general enough, but specific enough. And if somebody objected, then they could get to the BCA and they, the BCA then could go from there.
Right, because right, right now is part of our preliminary site plan or final site plan, we're not really reviewing for the lighting.
Because we don't mention.
We don't have any reference to it in our book.
The other thing is, I wouldn't necessarily want to trade off limiting lumens for safety. You know, parking lot safety, having lights on means people are dissuaded from using that as a location. Or maybe something we wouldn't want happening in the township. That makes it easier to patrol, having lights on, and so there's a trade-off there.
We could always have the ones that are motion sensor in those areas.
Well, theoretically, maybe, but if you go and park, it activates it, and then when there's no activity, car is parked, then the motion detection will go off, so.
Or an animal could set that on, possibly. Or an animal could also set off a motion.
Or a human being. Well, when you came to get your car, it would kick on.
Yeah.
Or should, I mean, many of them would, I would scout.
I think that if we could find exactly what they were referencing or what they had in mind and kind of got a gauge from the general public, what it is that they would like to see regulated. It wouldn't be something I would say completely disregarded. It would, I would open it up for consideration, but I think it's a little bit of a vague statement from one, possibly one individual, two. Maybe if we could get a little bit more of opinion from the public, that would make sense. If everybody would agree.
Yeah, and, and that is certainly part of the process. So the, what we'll do is, you know, if this is a, a topic that this board would like to explore further, we'll start to develop language over the course of several meetings. We'll allow public comment to, to, you know, to, to be part of that discussion, to help us evolve the language, and then we'll have a public hearing where they'll, the, the public will have ample opportunity to discuss their thoughts on the proposal, and we'll hear from outside agencies, namely the, the planning commission as part of the review process. And we'll certainly look, I would say with this one, we would talk to police and fire to see what concerns they might have with respect to lighting control. Is this, again, tonight, I, tonight's just an opening discussion on these topics to decide whether we want to even move forward with them any further, or if we just want to strike them, table them for now, and look at other topics is, is really what I'm trying to gauge tonight.
I'm not sure if I would want to strike it. I think it's a consideration. I think it's becoming, it's a proactive measure. But I, and I do recall when we were looking at the one development, we, amongst ourselves, we even disagreed on lighting in the development, if you recall. I didn't want any, any driveway lights, you know, the lamppost lights, I just think that's too much light. And many of us wanted the lights, right? So that, it's a, it's something that we're all going to talk about, but even when we were just talking about the development, we were you know, divided on that. So lighting might be an issue, especially, I guess, if I was living commercially and to be honest, the Brooklyn Exchange cabin light is on, on, all night. I don't see it in the summer. I do see it now, but it's not, you know, it's distant, so.
So later on our meeting, we're going to talk about something that's happening in the industrial district. And so one of the things that we want to think about is the industrial district too, right? The industrial district that we have, the I-2 in particular, which runs, it, it goes down west 130th, south of 303. That area and the I-1 district, which is the Aldi location, which doesn't currently extend all the way to the corner, but it can extend all the way to the corner. That's all part of all these property. So there's ample room for development or redevelopment along that strip. And how much lighting do we want in an industrial district where you see trucks potentially coming and going continuously throughout the, the day and evening? And again, currently, we have no regulation for it. So it's something to consider as we look into the next 15 to 20 years. What sort of development are we going to see along the I district? Along the in-town center? And do we want to have some control over it, or are we okay recognizing this is a township? And these property owners should be able to do what they want with their property, including with respect to lighting? It's just some considerations. If I'm reading this commission correctly, it sounds like it at least warrants a little bit of a further discussion at our next meeting. And by then, we can pull up some additional townships or municipalities around here, see what they are doing in terms of lighting, and look at whether this is something that we want to move forward with as a, as a, you know, full robust discussion or not, but at least I'm getting the general sense that there's enough of an interest here that it might warrant a second meeting where we have more discussion of it.
I agree.
I mean, I would certainly be interested in the safety services aspect, you know, their opinion on it. Because sometimes we may not want light, but you know, if it lends to improve safety, you know, it's a balancing act, and I'd just be curious what their opinion was.
So I'll provide that. I'll, I'll, I'll send an email to both of them shortly after this meeting. I'll try to get that to, just, at least again, just get some overview, understanding of what their approach would be. I'm sure that they're going to say, the more lighting, the better. You know, from a safety standpoint, so it's, it's certainly going to be balanced. And then what I would ask you to do is please look for other municipalities, other townships that might have some lighting control. I'll speak to Denise Testem at Planning Services and see if she's aware of any other townships that have lighting regulations, and if so, I'll forward those to you so that you can look at those in advance and, and see if there's any regulation that you like, that you think should be brought up at the next topic, at the next meeting.
I, I think probably an area of interest would be where residential property bounds the commercial property. I mean, I think that's always the biggest issue, but and how is that handled, you know?
And that's another thing, you know, how far away those lights have to be from the border.
And a lot of times when you're developing, you know, you're cutting down old tall trees which provided screening, and even if you're planting new ones, it'll be years before they provide some screening, right?
I think it's safe to say we should have some sort of verbiage or regulation around it. Just, it just depends on what that is. So I guess you're right.
Perfect. So then I'll, I'll get a little more information. Please do some research for the next meeting, and we'll, we'll talk about that one. Is there any public, are there any public comments with respect to light? Trustee Augustine?
Just, just so that the commission is aware, when I've had conversations with residents about this topic, it's been split. We have folks who live on Bellas Road, for instance, or Stony Hill, who say they are seeing the glaring lights from Brunswick, even with their blinds closed, curtains closed. You know, there's nothing we can do about Brunswick lighting, but certainly we can tackle Hankley lighting. I know that we have had, I have had conversations with business owners who don't feel safe going to their cars at night because there isn't adequate lighting in town square. And we've had, I've worked with the police department to make sure that those folks feel safe coming out of their businesses at night and getting to their cars. So that's a consideration as well.
Thank you. Mr. Pearl? For Judy's sake, please.
Sure.
And please state your name and address.
Richard Pearl, King Road. In addition to lumens, would you consider the color of the light? White, bright white could be very obnoxious. And in addition to business and industrial, would you consider residential? And the reason for the residential might be, should a residential development be allowed to light their monument by the road very bright?
We, we have some kind of rule about, so lights on signs. There are some regulations.
There are some.
Yes, sir.
But I don't think it mentions lumens or color.
No, it talks about a couple, no, it doesn't mention colors. I, I can't remember from off, but I know it doesn't mention colors, but direction and a few other things.
Color was brought up at a BCA just this last year.
Uh, just this last year. With respect to the power bills to open.
Marcus, did you have a chance to speak with B Z A chair about issues that they've seen over the year?
I s- I did not speak with her. I spoke to the art zoning department about it. And they said the amendments last year particularly pertaining to, um, how close accessory structures could be to the home will be a big help. The one that they still are going to, that, that will come up for variance is quite frequently are pools. So pools, swimming pools, pools are required, are required to be fifteen feet from the property, and some homeowners want to bring them closer to their homes. So that's the, that's the most common variance that we're seeing. Variance request, I should say.
Yeah, because I mean, I'd be curious where the, I think Michelle mentioned it, where the issues are.
So that would be, if we wanted to look in further, it would be swimming pools, hot tubs.
I meant the light issues where they were.
Mr. Larson?
My, Jim Larson, Twenty Car Road, my concern kind of dovetails along with Cindy's concern. I think the most immediate issues you're going to come up with are those areas that are primarily residential abutting retail, commercial, uh, properties. And the most pressing one I could see coming up in the near future is, uh, on Hundred and Thirty, with the high density senior housing that's going in there. I don't know what kind of lighting restrictions, if any, they have been imposed on them by the B Z A, or the potential for a drug mart or similar sized commercial, uh, establishment going in on the corner there, and that we, it's been talked about again and again. And I think you'd be really remiss in waiting until those projects are kind of in the can and laid out the gate, because you know how long it takes you to tease out a decision about pretty much anything. And is that decision really in the purview of the B Z A to define what the lighting will be? If there's any conditional use, but there doesn't necessarily have to be a conditional use that goes before that body and it just stays right here for you guys to decide. So I think that commercial, residential, and then any development that would go on the other side of three oh three that has primarily residential sides on, on one, uh, the big warehouse, I think there's something going on there that there's been some discussion about, but you really don't want to wait until that has presented itself before you really discuss all the potential options you have to satisfy both the developer and the residents, because there's a lot of trees taken down on that, uh, Hundred and Thirty area, lots, and a lot of the screening has gone away, so. I said my piece. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good zoning is really looking probably five years ahead is, is where we want to be. So we want to think about what will happen in five to ten years, not what's on the immediate horizon, because if it's on the immediate horizon, it's almost too late for us to do anything about. And so that's why I'm, I'm looking at what is happening in the industrial district, the potential for the Aldi's location, and, and seeing that there's the opportunity for development in the next five, ten, fifteen years there.
Maybe the, um, reverse way of looking at this is when developments go in or, um, commercial development, whatever, that we look at retaining some of the tall trees, you know, a- along the buff, along the boundary lines.
It's hard to do. We can regulate the setback, but we can't regulate the trees. For instance, they can clear cut the trees before they even come to us.
Well, that's true.
So.
But I like just, um, you know, you got to think out of the box. I mean, yeah, I don't want to be like a city where like, you know, you can only cut down two trees a year, and if you cut down more than two, then you got to plant, you know, however many you cut down, or a one for two ratio. But maybe something analogous to that where we can somehow.
Try to maintain.
Maintain some of the, you know, and I think of the Hundred Thirty project with so many trees gone, you know, there's still some tall trees there which provide screening maybe in the summertime, but that maybe would help alleviate, you know, it's just looking at different solutions instead of trying to mandate necessarily the direction of a light or the lumens or the color. So.
I would certainly welcome, you know, if you want to do some research on that and, and see if there's any other preferably townships that have regulations that might be useful for us to look at. I don't think any of us are opposed to it. I think that that's part of why we looked at conservation developments and we created that envelope around there to try to protect so that buffer and make sure that hopefully the, that hundred feet of space all around the subdivision will stay in its current natural state, preferably if it has trees on it, great. And that, that was the goal that we had.
So maybe we should do something comparable for commercial slash business districts.
A- and we, we do have setbacks. I mean, we have some pretty substantial setbacks if there's a residence, we're residential and
Well.
Business or residential.
Yeah, it wouldn't necessarily equate though a setback to like the concept of conservation, because the conservation development, you're talking about not disturbing what's there theoretically. Practically, I don't know what might really happen, but a setback still says I can still cut down everything and plant a few shrubs or whatever I do. It doesn't necessarily conserve what's already in that buffer area.
But, but they're giving us something in return, right? They're, we're, we're giving them the opportunity to build a subdivision they otherwise wouldn't be able to have in exchange for some conservation space. And so that might be more of a challenge in industrial where we're not giving them anything. So it's just something for us to think out, think about. But again, I would welcome any language to see if we can, if there's something out there that we can do, I don't think this commission's opposed to it. Anyone else?
I would suggest you, some stuff is in, you can't control. All Arborcrest, if you go down it tonight, you'll see the lights from the Aldi warehouse lighting up the sky. During the summer it goes down, but it's, you have so much of the horizon that's lit up because of all the activity with the trucks coming through there. Setbacks don't mean anything because the distance is greater than you realize because you still have a cemetery image between there, but you still get a ton of light. So I think regulating it's going to be a lot more difficult than you realize, unless you get into where the lights are pointed.
The directions.
But what may be there today, you know, Aldi was built before the development was there, right? And then you ran into it now, so I think it's going to be difficult to regulate, but worth looking into.
Thank you. Jim Byalowski, what's your address?
Arborcrest, twenty three hundred.
Thank you. All right, so we will, uh, I'll keep that on the agenda for the next meeting, and then again, if there's any other discussion pertaining to some sort of buffer, I would love to hear that, and, and I'll put that as an agenda item. If you email me with some, with, if you find something and you want to discuss it, just email me and I'll put it on the agenda.
Sounds good.
The next item for us to discuss is the B one district at Bellas and Hinckley Hills. Uh, if you recall, we worked last year at, with a proposal to move that to a residential district. Ultimately, we recommended that it stayed B one. The trustees agreed and maintained it as a B one. Uh, there's some discussion as to whether that should remain a B one. It should move into some other district, or it should, uh, uh, be a new district. I will say that the comprehensive plan puts that in the same district as, uh, the West One Thirty, and now I'm running.
Boston.
Boston, thank you. Z's Ice Cream, C V S, back corner. Uh, so that would be a B two district. Um, so one option would be to follow the comprehensive plan and amend it to a B two district, which would impose a few more restrictions, or look at something else, or maintain as a B one. I'm, I just, this was another topic that we had said that we wanted to look at again as a result of the of us deciding last year not to move forward with the recommendation.
Well, since it's similar, similar, not the same as, but similar to the, uh, area up there at Boston and Hundred and Thirty, when, maybe it would make sense to turn it to a B two and we have a certain amount of consistency. I think I'd like, I want to lay both of these side by side and see what.
Look at the table.
Yeah. I, I don't, I'll, something I'll do between now and next meeting.
I'll do it right now, just for everyone else to see. You don't, I mean, again, we can talk about this next time if you'd like. Uh, can, can you make me a host trustee Augustine? Says host disabled participant screen sharing, is what I'm seeing. So just a reminder for everyone, B one district is currently the corner, the, uh, the corner where the Buzzard's Cove is, and also up on West One Thirty, Three Oh Three. Uh, B two is, uh, the, the corner that we just spoke about. Why can't I remember the name again? Boston, thank you, in West One Thirty, and B three is the, the town center. So there's the listed, uh, permitted and conditional uses within each. In the B one district, we allow larger retail space above twelve thousand square feet. We do not allow that in either of the two dis- other districts.
Chris Marcus, what page is that on?
Sixty six of the new.
The new one.
New one. I think it's very close to sixty six.
Yeah, sixty five.
Yeah, sixty four, sixty five.
Sixty five. So maybe just as a, not necessarily today's meeting, but maybe for next month, maybe, um, an interesting exercise might be to just go through the chart and indicate from the commission's standpoint what they feel should be included or Buzzard's Cove, or whether something should be conditional or permitted. You know, kind of go on, let's just say if we were to create a B four or B four park district, whatever. Just as an exercise to see what would be desired and what would not be as appropriate maybe for a park district, and see where that comes out. I mean, B two gets us closer to that, but there might be things in B two that might not be desirable in the park area. Considering the, considering, there's a difference between Hundred Thirty and Boston, which is, you know, a commercial intersection there. And, um, the residences are away from that corner as opposed to Ellis and Hinckley Hills where you've got residents living right across the street. So I think there's a distinction.
Didn't we kind of do that? I mean, maybe we didn't do that as an exercise, but didn't we go over that?
No.
When we talked about it?
No. I mean, like, create a column and just go through for the park, you know, for the Buzzard's Cove.
Right.
And just go through. No, we, I don't.
We didn't do the exercise.
We didn't do it.
We did it in the discussion format.
I think we kind of did it with Town Center.
Yeah.
We went through each one.
Okay.
But not, you know, that's when we started talking about that, but then the idea of, oh, the residential.
Okay.
And then they kind of you know, kind of threw that to the side.
Actually, looking at it very quickly, making that change, we'd be adding some conditional which further protects that the way it is.
Correct.
I mean, it makes more sense once I look at the, at the grid.
To put it in the B two district.
Yeah, a lot, it makes a lot of sense. I certainly don't think we need to create a district and to set this up because we hope someday the park would take it over. I, I don't think that's should be our goal. I mean, if it happens that way, that's great.
I, I'm not doing this to set it up for Metro Parks to take this over. I'm doing it as what happens if there's a change in, is that something?
Covered right here, be conditionals.
Well, I think we should still go through each one, you know?
I have, I have no problem with that, but I think all I'm saying.
I just don't want to kind of say, yeah, I mean, for the most part, maybe they are a lot alike, but there might be some things that, you know, would you want a bank and savings and loan?
It's a conditional.
It's a condition. There are very few permitted things within the B two district. Retail less than twelve thousand square feet, personal services in a completely enclosed building. On a bank is per, bank is, bank savings, loans, credit unions are permitted.
Are permitted.
Yeah, but again, it's conditional, it's conditional.
No, it's permitted. It's permitted, it's not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A restaurant is permitted.
I mean, I, I think it would.
Signs are permitted.
It's already permitted.
Very few things are permitted within the B two district. Everything else is conditional. Does it hurt to go through it? I mean.
No, I, I said, that's fine, if you'd like, we can go through it. I'd, you know, like time to, you know, review it easy.
Right. I mean, I think I'd like time to go over to.
So that's another item that we would like to maintain on the agenda and discuss next time with an exercise of putting in another column and seeing where, where, where it falls. And if it's worthwhile to do a B four or just merge it with another B, the existing business district.
Yep.
Okay. Any public comments on that? My final item of the night, and this is, again, this, this will be more of a cleanup, but I wanted to get us started to think about it. One of the B Z A members specifically reached out, uh, because if you look in our zoning code, and I'll continue sharing because I'm going to pull it up. Uh, floor area is described in our residential districts, and there's floor area requirements. And you'll note that the floor area requirements, this is six R one dot five, which on, in the new book is page forty four, so it's probably page forty three or forty two in the old book. Um, sorry, we just got our new books today printed, so people who are looking through paper might be flipping through the old one, which is why I'm referring to both. And floor area, we, we, we talk about what floor area is, and we say for purposes of calculating the floor area, all areas within basements, garages, breezeways, terraces, or porches, or any accessory building or structure shall not be included. That's really the only place floor area appears. In contrast, if you search for living space, we have a definition of living space, but living space only appears in our book once, and that's in the definitions. And you'll notice there that this also says it does not include basements, porches, garages, breezeways, or terraces. So their questioning is living spaces the same as floor area? Are those different? And so that's something that we just need to look at and clarify in our book. Uh, and if they are different, we need to define it probably for area up above, and if not, we just need to pick out one of those two terms and make them consistent.
Mr. Chairman, I did, you sent this out to the group before we, and I, there actually are two different definitions for those two things per Ohio State law and also, uh, they have an ordinance referring to that, and then also, um,
In our book or?
Acquiesce, in, in, in Ohio.
In just general.
Yeah, in general. There is a definition. I actually wrote it down. I just didn't want to be rude and pull out my cell phone, but I did make a note. They, um, actually do have two different definitions, and we could probably go down that road.
Michelle, move the microphone closer to you. I'm afraid Jude's not going to be able to pick her up.
Am I not loud enough?
Voice as well.
Oh, wow. I have never heard.
Judy's always yelling at me for, that's why I have two microphones, because if I'm turned this way, it goes this way.
Well, I did get your, you know, that came up, and I remembered that this is something that has come up in the past in that world, and, um, the floor area is the total area that, uh, a building occupies on a plan. And the floor area is the total area that a building occupies on a plot of land. That's the floor area, so that would be first floor, that would be the actual space of the property. Living space is a space within a dwelling unit utilized for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, bathing, washing, and sanitation purposes.
I'm, I'm looking at how that melds with ours.
It's very close, it's debatable.
So just to throw another wrench, monkey wrench in the works. Perhaps actually floor area is throughout the zoning resolution. And it's always kind of defined in the context it's being used. The living space, like you said, is just the definition. But the problem is we have the word, the term living area in like six R1 and six R2. Perhaps living area really should be living space as opposed to doing anything with floor area. I, I'd be hesitant to touch floor area because if you, if you scan a document, it's all over. But the living space maybe is really the same thing as living area. And living area kind of only applies in the residential things, but just throw that third term that maybe shouldn't be there and replace that with space. So and then that kind of keeps in line with the two definitions.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's something that I think the BZA had brought up at the last meeting, so that's where this is coming from as a discussion that we need to look at and clarify.
Yeah.
These, these items. So I'll keep that one on the agenda mostly because I think that as we move forward with any future text amendment, this should be part of it. I think that out of the two items I've listed here, this will be the easier one. The next one that I'm going, that I have listed here is group home versus family home versus institution of human care. And the reason that I do that is because if you look for in group, it's not actually group home, it's group and family home. But we have in schedule nine point four, group and family homes for persons with disability, and we have how many spaces? That's the only place that we reference a group home. We also reference in six R1 dot two, and it's also in, uh, it's in both R1 and R2 districts, a family home. And we note that for both of them, a family home, an adult family home and family homes for persons with disability are conditional uses. Wait, is that a conditional, it's an accessory use, excuse me. And then notably distinct from that, we have institutions of human care, which is a conditional, conditionally permitted use in the R1 and R2 districts. So we don't have any definitions for any of these things to identify what the difference between institution for human care is, which is a conditional use. A family home, which is an accessory use. And then we have this group home and family home in nine point four parking. So it's another area topic that I think that at some point we need to start defining what these things are. Because if not, someone's going to identify which one of these best suits them. And they're going to argue they're a family home, they're an institution for human care. So it, it's something that I, I think that we behoove us to start working through to identify these things. If they're all the same, one should not be an accessory use and one should be a conditional use. And then also define them because there are no definitions for any of these things.
Yeah, I'd agree.
Marcus, there is a legal definition for group homes out there that use that as a start.
I agree.
So, and I think if I'm understanding, prior to 2013, we actually had some definitions and there's actually basically two tiers of group homes as we had previously had it in our book. And then that was removed. And so well, we can look at that as a starting basis, but they, I think that they felt it was just too convoluted, so that's why they, they separated that.
Because like the one I just popped up, it says a group home, Michelle Mayner Residential Facility provides room and board, personal care, rehabilitation services and supervised, or supervision in a family-like setting for at least nine, but not more than sixteen. Seems like it's pretty tight and then you can do the same for the other two. Clear it up a little bit.
A little bit of background, part of that happened on 130th for the disabled veterans. The federal government stepped in and said, here's the way you will play this game.
Because of fair housing?
Pardon?
I would assume that's F8.
Well, they, yeah, it was, they were, they're disabled veterans. They were physically, they had mental issues, uh, you know, I, I don't know what all they were, but and there, uh, there was a big complaint be, because from time to time they would wander off and they didn't, there was no destruction or anything, they were just wandering around and bothering the neighbors.
But you also have your local, you know, the county, I should say.
Right.
County MRDD programs.
Right.
That they want to place individuals in a community, you know, in a, and I think they've kind of actually gotten away from that term of group home, but in a, in a home setting, in a residential setting, you know, with with the super twenty-four by seven supervision with, you know, a few residents, not necessarily nine or sixteen, but just to be able to.
It's, at that time, it seemed they were putting them more in cities than in the rural areas, like the one on Laurel Road, but I'm sure that.
You know, it's not, it's not hard, yeah, yeah, it can happen anywhere if somebody decides to donate their home to one of the organizations that provides those services, so.
I just want to make sure that we have clarity as to, particularly with respect to, I don't know what an institution of human care means.
Right, right.
So that's the one that really gets me is what does that? Anything I think can be an institution of human care? And so I don't want someone to grab onto that and argue that they are an institution of human care, especially when we have this other definition of a family home.
Yeah.
And one is an accessory use and one is a condition to use. So I think it's something that we should definitely explore.
Yeah.
Even though it might not be an incredibly pressing issue, it's something that we should probably look into.
Well, I, yeah, I agree with you, the, if no one knows that definition, that can be used for a lot of different things. The other thing we want to be careful is to family home, you know, fair housing, we need to define that very well and treat everyone. We have to make sure we're not, you know, violating that either by defining family, do you see what I mean?
We've had that discussion numerous times.
So I've missed a lot.
In all suites as well, but not.
Yeah.
Not with respect to this.
But we should have definitions that could cause problems down the road. We have a lot of work to do that I missed here. Hey, and I'm just an alternate. I get, I get to drop the bombs and walk away, kidding.
So unfortunately, nothing came off the list tonight. Are there any other topics that, that I missed that you really want to discuss in the next meeting? To get us started on, or can we work further on these three topics first? And then look to see if there's any other topics that we want to explore before we move forward with text amendment.
Let's see, let's see what happens next month as we.
Go through.
Let's just go through, you know, are we going to do, you know, like control or not? And what are we going to do about park district and I'm sorry, I call it park district. That's a Freudian slip.
Yeah, I understand, but, but okay, whatever.
Because I just, I just.
You want a part there?
I, no, I just see it different from 130th and Boston, that's all.
Okay.
And then the, the terms thing, I mean, I think it's, you know, we've got a little bit to do here.
I think we have plenty. I just wanted to make sure I was cognizant if anyone else really had a passion about a topic and felt we should be exploring it right now.
No, my concern was what, what is the public bringing to us? That's why I asked about that. And if there's nothing they're complaining about other than the ones that we've talked about, the pools being closer or something. If that's, if that's the only thing, I mean, we don't know what the complaints are, you know, it's not coming to us, so the concerns.
The only one that I'm, the other, another one that I'm aware of, and I think everyone's had that email, is Mr. Pearl brought up the service station again. And that's something that we can certainly explore again. It's not a topic that I had here on this list, but that was the only other topic that I had heard about recently. That might warrant some discussion moving forward. So.
Okay.
All right, we'll keep them at these three. Is there any public comments with respect to the term consistency section? No? Perfect.
Marcus, would you summarize how we did get to a, looking at service station definition versus remodeling it? Because I think you were the only one on the board when that was presented and then turned down.
Oh, no, Mr. Manley's been on the full-time, I've had him, so has Miss Crew.
That was the year before.
Right.
I was probably on it.
She was, she was a voting member, Mr. Manley, I came on, Mr. Manley came on right before me and then I.
I don't think so, because they, they.
He was chairman.
Yeah. Yeah, so I can give you a brief evolution, but I can't probably speak to it as well as you can. What had happened is we had worked through, there was some discussion about this antiquated definition of automobile service station as we have in our code, which allows for a wide variety of things, think of a self-service gas station plus an auto service mechanic shop and so on and so forth. And so there was some discussion as to whether, I forget the name of the company, but it was like.
The Bourbon Transportation.
No, it was after, it was after that, it was Conrad's or whoever wanted to do the oil change place.
Tire Max.
Tire Max.
Loops.
Tire Max, thank you. And whether they wanted, they, whether they fit the definition of a wheel service station or I think the other option was a retail shopper and auto service, I forget what the other one was. So as we, as that came through, we started talking about the definition. We ultimately developed some definitions for an automobile service station. We looked at a lot of different things, one that broke it down into basically what would amount to your, your current conventional gasoline station. Then we broke it down into my, no, we did not, we looked at breaking it down into minor and major automobile repair. We just grouped those together as to one. And so we sent that package and I can send you the language that we had worked on before up through the process all the way to the trustees. And the trustees ultimately felt that it was inappropriate at that time, in part because we were undergoing that comprehensive audit at that point to do anything with that language. And so after that, it stalled out and then we've done nothing more with it. So we've, we are still at the original definition of an automobile service station. Did I do that justice, Mr. Pearl?
Oh, you did mention electric vehicle charging station.
No, I did not mention electric, because I couldn't remember, I don't know if we, I think we ultimately decided not to do anything with.
That wasn't the definition that was presented to the trustees.
Right.
In twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one.
Right.
Included electric vehicle charging.
Did it?
Yes.
Okay. So that's where, that's where we're at, and I can pull up that language and I'll send that to you just so that you have what we did in twenty-twenty-one. But so that might be another topic that we want to look into. But I thought that we would go through some of these other topics that are relatively new to this commission and new to the discussion first. And then if we wanted to look into that one towards the end of any proposed text amendment, we could do so. Good.
I wouldn't mind revisiting that one. I think that one was very, um, we talked, spent a lot of time on it.
We did.
A lot. So that would be good to go back.
We still have that language, so that's a relatively easy thing for us to at least have a starting point, so it's not as conceptual as some of these other topics, which is why I would prefer that we move forward with some of the higher concept items first, work throughs, whether we want to introduce language, how that language evolves, and then we can add on other areas, which we already might have some starting language for us to look at. If there's nothing else on that, I'll move on to the chairman's report. For the first time since Inspector Wilson has been the zoning inspector, there is a request for a similar use finding. So as, as you might remember, our code does not, our code allows for similar uses. So basically, we enumerate certain things that are permitted within each district, but then we allow for similar uses of those things. And so someone has to make a determination if something is similar enough to what else is permitted or conditional within that that zone, that the item that's being proposed should in fact be there. And so the one that's come before us is Sunbelt Tool Rental is looking to acquire thirty acres in the I2 district. It's past senior housing, it's like, I don't know exactly where it is there. I think it's, is there is a Great Lakes.
Construction.
Great Lakes construction, it's very close to Great Lakes construction, it might be directly in front of it. There's, there's eleven acres there. And so Sunbelt Tool Rental has requested a similar use finding with respect to that. And so in our I2 district, we allow offices, research laboratories, building construction contractors, printing, publishing, or engraving, equipment repair services, warehousing, light manufacturing, assembly, repair, and sale of, of certain materials, auto repair and service, repair and sales of commercial vehicles, sexually oriented uses and similar, and then similar uses. And so they're going to come in and, and, and request a finding of similar use probably based on the fact that they would have very similar equipment to what you would see in a building, construction contractors or with respect to equipment repair services. So the BZA is now responsible for reviewing that, and so they will go through the process. And I think that they are having a meeting in, end of February for that, to decide whether it is indeed a similar use or not. If there's any variances, they'll then look at the variances separate and apart from the similar use, and we will do a preliminary review and a final site plan review, assuming the similar use finding is granted. So that's just a little bit of information for you, there's nothing for us to do at this point. The BZA will review that for similar use. Our next regular zoning commission meeting will be March second, twenty-twenty-three at seven PM, Mr. Larson.
Yeah, well, we had a nice chat about horses.
Seven PM. That is all that I have. Ms. Crew.
I don't have anything. Nothing?
Mr. Manley?
No, no, no comment.
Ms. Engelman?
I, of course I do. I guess this is regarding Mr. Pearl's email to you, which you then distributed a couple days ago to us. And there is a statement in here. And it appears as if it would be a quote that I made. Let's see, it's the fourth, fifth paragraph down. Ms. Engelman made an excellent point of view of quote, how does keeping Hinkley Rural and Spacious relate to new requirements for the historic town center, end quote. And so I just kind of want to say that I don't think I said that, if that's meant to be a direct quote. I went back and reviewed just the videos and I just didn't make a statement, so I don't know whether that's an inference that was made, but when something gets put in double quotes, it's usually indicating that it's a direct quote. I just did not make that statement at all. So maybe that was an inference regarding the park area, Buzzard's Cove, but I just wanted to be clear to everybody that I went back and double and triple checked it, so.
And what did you find that you said?
Actually, I didn't breathe those two concepts in one sentence. We were talking about town center. And then I said, then I moved on to residential land use, the spacious concept. So I really wasn't even talking about business districts at that point. So if you go back and review, you won't see me say anything like that, but just want to point that out.
Thank you. Trustee Augustine?
I do not have anything.
Trustee Ashram? Nothing, perfect. Any other comments from the public?
Just one general one, and this has been addressed already, I'm just not aware of it. At the last two trustee meetings, there's been several, I should say, been discussion on fees, there's only charges, fences under six foot, what applies, what doesn't apply, whether they're considered structures. I would encourage the zoning commission to consider creating a definition or being very specific in whether a fence under six foot is considered to be a structure or not. That would alleviate concerns whether a seventy-five dollar fee would apply. The, the concerns that came up at the meeting were if I put a garden fence in or I put a small little decorative fence in front of the house, The, the concerns that came up at the meeting were if I put a garden fence in, or I put a small little decorative fence in front of the house, technically it says it's subject to a seventy-five dollar fee. And fee point one, if you think I want to pay seventy-five dollars here, but a fence around my garden, I think that's not going to happen. So to avoid some of the ambiguity and confusion that's out there, I encourage the zoning commission to potentially consider specifically stating that a fence under six foot is not considered to be a structure.
Fences are currently structures, and that's why we regulated them as, as though they are structures. So the township trustees have the option to set the fees at whatever they want. That's up to the township trustees. From a zoning standpoint, we've always required fences, even under six feet, to have an inspection. And so there's always, the, the reason zoning inspector is able to inspect is because they are considered structures, they are regulated by our zoning code. The, the current, previously, we had this language that said a no-fee permit should be required for under six feet. But really, our job is not to set fees. That's for the trustees to set. And so the trustee, we removed that language from our, our code so that the trustees have at their option the ability to set a fee or not set a fee. That's for them to decide. But a fence is a structure, and we want to keep it a structure, I would think, because we want to be able to watch what's happening. Now, to your point that a, you know, a snow fence or something, you wouldn't pay for a little garden fence. You know, if you look at our definition of a swimming pool, our swimming pool says anything that's, I think, over two feet is considered to be a swimming pool, and therefore requires a permit as well. But I think that if you ask zoning inspector Wilson, how many of those seasonal pools that you see go up that are kind of semi-inflatable, that have a filter in them, you put them up for the season, and you take them down, how many people have pool permits for those? It's probably very slim, that the zoning inspector has some discretion with respect to that. But this is what's allowing him to have any say at all in what's happening under six feet.
But wouldn't it avoid some of the confusion that's often out, because, you know, they, they have good discussions on it, and part of it is, it says it's a structure, so it shouldn't be subject to it. You're going to get some pushback on it. Wouldn't it be easier to go back and redefine saying that it's not considered a smaller fence? Now, what, six foot five, or whatever the definition is, I think that would avoid potential for ambiguity, because then somebody can, you know, it, it's just a point of contention that you may avoid by clearing up the definition. And I think it's worth a discussion.
If I, I, I think the trustees, if they would want to, they could charge fees based on the height of the fence. I think we need, we need that. I know of situations where even smaller fences were brought out into the right of way. We're concerned with the drain ditches and a few other things, so I think these should be still reviewed. If people, people take advantage of it.
I agree with you. You know, when I think of zoning, one of the things that I think that the zoning inspector, having that conversation with the zoning inspector prior to construction of anything is a great idea, because it, it minimizes future conflict. So getting a phone, having the zoning inspector be aware of it, and then having a conversation about it, where are you placing it? What's the, how opaque is it? Those kind of items from the very beginning is much better off, because the, the homeowner hasn't invested any money yet in that fence. And so to have the zoning inspector look at these items, especially when they are in very close proximity to potentially someone else's property, it, this, this is what allows the zoning inspector to do that. So I would certainly not be in favor of, of removing fence from a structure. Again, let the trustees decide if they want to very clearly delineate six foot over, here's the fee, two foot over, here's the fee, no fee for any other fence, that, that's on their, their discretion. But from a zoning perspective, I think that we want to make sure that the, the zoning inspector has the ability to look at those fences and also to, if there's any problems with a fence, and it wasn't permitted, to have it pulled down.
I understand the thesis.
Anything else on the public?
Can I just make one note? When the Hinkley Record is published, it's published on the fifteenth of the month before, so the information that you're getting is delayed. The trustees decided to associate a seventy-five dollar fee for fences as long as it is six feet or higher. That is the way the fee structure reads right now. We will not be charging for anything below six feet. That has always been that way, but we do require a permit. One of the biggest problems we have in our zoning office is fencing that is on someone else's property. And if you have a fence on someone else's property and you've invested ten thousand dollars, you really don't want to move it. And it becomes a civil issue because people aren't coming in for the permitting that they're required to do.
So, yeah, and nothing that we have done recently has changed that, except for giving the township trustees the option to charge a fee. Which nowhere else in our code do we have any limitations on fees at all. So that was just an anomaly that we had in there, a no-fee permit.
Well, but just really zoning by definition basically is one size fits all. This is just kind of the way zoning is. You know, the exceptions are very limited, and that's why you have the B Z A, hence conditionals. And I think that's perfect, because, because I, I know of situations where fences less than six feet caused issues, not only that, but other issues.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion to adjourn at eight sixteen P M.
I'm waiting for you.
I'll second it.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.